Next.
I still have two more things and I'm gonna, first of all, I also wanna give a congratulations. I have two more, but Dr. Yusef Mosalem, the new superintendent for Crestwood Schools. Let's give him a big round of applause.
Is he, is Yusef here?
I don't think he, because he has some things he's doing with the board over there. So we'll have to get him here though and I'm sure he'll see it. So we're on TV and I know a lot of us have put out Facebook in the district and other posts to congratulate him.
All right.
Last thing I have, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Danine Charles and Ms. Zainab Jabril to come up. I'm gonna be making some comments, a statement I'm gonna put together, and I'm gonna reference Ms. Charles in her role as coordinator of effective education. So just wanna kinda make this statement. I'll have them there and maybe to make some comments after, just about culture and climate. You know, every day in more than, you know, we have 34 schools and over a thousand classrooms. We have great teachers that provide the very best instruction to our students, who are by principals, administrators, dedicated team of non-instructional staff members. And again, this is just kind of a general statement, but I'm gonna have then Ms. Charles make some comments on her role as effective education. But there are some rare occasions when events occur that do not align with the standards and principles of our district. We will take corrective action to maintain the level of instruction our community expects, and I just want everyone to be aware of that. Our students, parents, and community members can be assured that this administration will always take any reports of harassment, bullying, or intimidation with the utmost seriousness and in accordance with Board Policy 5517, and everyone can see that policy online. We will thoroughly investigate all claims, provide all parties involved with due process, and if needed, anyone found to be in contradiction of the policies will be held accountable for their actions. Being proactive and taking the steps necessary to prevent incidents from happening is always the best approach to keeping schools safe. We'll always continue to do that. We cannot do this alone and continually work with several community partners to bring programs, events, and assemblies to schools that help us build a culture and climate that supports learning for all. These efforts are a high priority for us and are led by Ms. Charles, our leader for, coordinator for effective education. Over the years, our district has been featured in articles that highlight our efforts to create schools that are welcoming to all. Last year, Solana Elementary and Intermediate Schools were featured in the 20-minute film The Color in Colorado. Some of you were there for the opening, showcasing the events of how these schools implement immigrant students, how immigrant students succeed and provide a welcoming school environment. Our students also take an active role in celebrating, honoring, and recognizing the diversity in our district and those who have championed the cause of equality and diversity. Dearborn Public Schools is dedicated to the goal of building a culture of acceptance and respect between all of our students, staff, parents, community members, and I know our union heads are here too, and we appreciate their involvement and support. Any isolated incident does not reflect the overall environment in our district. We know that one of the best ways to, for us to put students first is to be relentless in our efforts to partner with their community, share information, keep an open line of communication, and always work together to inspire, educate, and celebrate. And so I'll let Ms. Charles comment on some of the work that she's doing, and then we do have example here from one of the schools. I know Ms. Jabril does a lot with restorative practices.
Dr. Maleko, you said mostly everything, but I'll try to find something to talk about. But I think one of the first things today, couldn't be a better day because October is National Bullying Prevention Month. So to talk about this is so important in terms of climate and culture in our schools, but on a national level, and I'll talk about the national level and then the district. And then Zainab, she'll talk about more of the local within the schools, but on a national level, what we're doing is for the past several years, we've really promoted the Tyler Clementi Foundation, and that was an 18-year-old young man who committed suicide in New Jersey because of cyberbullying. So we have joined over a million upstanders all over the world to really promote saying no to bullying and doing more than just saying no, but on the first day of school or at least the first week, every school in our district, all 34 schools, are part of hashtag day one. And of course, it can happen within the week. We know that first day is usually a half-day, but all of the students are engaged in some type of activity in their classes, and they make a pledge to say no, to be an upstander, to be a part of creating a culture that is inviting, that is kind, and that is empathetic. So on the national level, that's what we're involved in. In terms of the district and all of the trustees and our president, you all know that with our district policy, there are five components, two of which involve having the assemblies as Dr. Maleko talked about, but we know that the national move, just to have that one day or one week, is only one day in time. The assemblies, that's one or three assemblies, and you have all of the students together. We know the impact is not as great as if you are working with your students, your teachers, and your parents, more on the local level in the school when all of those activities and initiatives are embedded in everyday life in the school. So Zainab, she'll talk a little bit about what happens at Smith.
And Ms. Zainab Jabril, she doesn't have any job. She's a principal at Smith Middle School. So thank you for coming.
Good evening, everybody.
Appreciate Ms. Charles.
So a lot of what we do, we've kinda moved away from the idea of having assemblies at the school, and what we do is we provide teachers with lessons during their advisory time. So every six weeks, we dedicate a whole week with lessons that one of our social workers provides to each one of our teachers, and they implement that within a small group, which is usually less than 20 students within their advisory group. We find that that is more impactful than having an assembly with, let's say, 300 students there. So one week, for example, we would focus on the word kindness and, you know, have a lot of different activities during that week that involve that. We also incorporate the, when we have Care to the Core Week, we incorporated that with Arab, with the National Arab Heritage Month, and so we kinda combined the two to bring awareness, you know, to both together. So we had a poetry slam, we have poster contests that are all geared toward anti-bullying sentiments. But above and beyond that, we also have student leadership opportunities, and I truly believe that these things are preventative in getting the students involved in different leadership opportunities. So we have social justice. We have a group of students that actually works on social justice, and a lot of what they do focuses on, you know, some of the anti-bullying stuff along with other things, other causes that they believe in, so they bring that to us and we work together on that. I also have the web group, which is where every student belongs, and that entails a group of eighth graders who mentor sixth, incoming sixth graders. So the sixth graders pretty much have somebody that they could always go to, you know, as far as their needs, getting acclimated in the building and that kinda thing. We currently have 45 students in the web program, which is pretty much one out of five of our eighth graders that are hand-selected to work with sixth graders. The other thing that we have are the peer-to-peer mentoring. As you all know, we have three center-based programs in our building, the three ASD classrooms, and so we have student leaders every hour that go into these ASD classrooms to work with our ASD students. So that's another leadership opportunity, and these are not always the strongest of students, but they are trained and they work very closely with the teachers, and we see some of our students that might have behavior problems really blossom in these, you know, when they're given these opportunities. Some of the other things that we have are obviously the SEDSAC. We have a group of students that work with Dr. Choco, and they brought forth several ideas. Last year, they actually presented to our staff. They surveyed students, because as much as we'd like to say that, you know, we're, we don't have bullying going on, we do know that it does happen, and it's the students that bring those issues to us because they speak freely and, you know, amongst each other. So they bring those issues to us and they help us, you know, come up with ideas and activities to address certain things that they see within their student body. I also have a strong student council. We're going on year two of having a very strong student council that I'm very proud of. They work together and they kinda gauge the other students in several of their classes as far as how they can improve the school culture, things that we could do, you know, at the school level. They've also bought furniture for our atrium, so those are the different kinds of things that our student council works on. And like I said, we have different kinds of competitions throughout the year. So basically, embedding restorative practices within our instruction is pretty much, you know, the focus of what we're doing. I can honestly say that pretty much every single teacher at Smith is trained in restorative circles. We have, our newest teachers are part of the newest cohort, and their second training is on Wednesday. We have someone coming to train them. It's a two-day series, so they will be trained on Wednesday for that. And you're always welcome to come to Smith and see all the great things that we have going on. We also have in our planner the Smith Viking Values, and we try to encourage the teachers to kinda use this, you know, within their conversations with students and that kinda thing.
Are there any questions? Okay, Trustee Mosip and then Trustee Lane.
It's great that you're doing all of these kinda things. I actually was subject to bullying when I came to the U.S., and it was not nice, and I still remember it until today. But where, what I remember more is those students who stood up for me. And they're still my friends until today. So I appreciate them, I cherish them now, and I thank them because without them, probably I would not be here today, and I mean that wholeheartedly. So I had a, I have a question for you, and thank you for, I hope all of the principals are incorporating all of what you do and what the district provides to prevent this epidemic because I hear parents all the time talking to me about their kids getting bullied all the time, and it's very unfortunate, and as you alluded to it, cyberbullying has been crazy, and you could hardly trace it. And I hope that when we have these restorative practices, that these students really know their mistakes, I mean, the students who are doing the aggression, and that they would hopefully become themselves to be friends instead of bullies, because it's great, a feeling, it's a great feeling when you help somebody instead of bringing harm to that person. And people might not realize that they are doing bullying to some students, right?
Absolutely.
And students sometimes do not realize that. They think that sometimes it's funny, sometimes it's amusing to other students, and the dark side is that when students actually who are getting bullied start bullying other students.
Yeah.
So here's my question, sorry, but you mentioned that you're getting away from assemblies.
Yeah.
What made you make that decision? Why, why is assemblies even one or two not effective?
I'm not saying that I'm totally against having assemblies, but I just feel that having two or 300 students in an auditorium, being an assistant principal at the high school for many years, I didn't find that to be very effective.
Uncontrollable situation, right?
I find that having students in smaller groups and having the teachers speak to them in those intimate groups is a lot more effective. That's just based on my experience.
Well, that's the last thing I'd like to share on this topic, is that I'd like to share from my own experiences I remember back in high school, and that was 15 years ago, so for the record. I remember those assemblies very well, and they resonated with me. And I actually attended a session by Mr. Anthony Iyani at Henry Ford College that the college organized, and he was just spot-on on a lot of things. So I hope that, yeah, you're not involving the entire school, but if you, if you can, still look into these assemblies and see where the motivational speakers, and Anthony is a Spartan, he's a Spartan basketball player, and he was getting bullied for his height. So please, look into that and see if you can bring motivational speakers because they do change, and sometimes you need an outside person at times, so.
I definitely agree with that, as far as starting the initiative with something like that and then maybe carrying it further as far as the weekly lessons. But I also wanna comment on the restorative practices as you mentioned. A lot of, when bullying incidents are brought to our attention, a lot of what we do is try to emphasize the fact of repairing the harm that was done. So that's kinda the idea that we focus on in order to, because students, you know, might retaliate if it's approached in a different way. So a lot of what we try to do is corrective rather than punitive, and I do feel that when students know that things are going to be addressed and that they have to correct the harm that they did, you know, that gets them to think as citizens. This is what we do as adults as well.
Right.
And also focusing on the positive upstanders. I do make phone calls home to students who, who I know, you know, or hear through the grapevine that have done positive things, you know, without anybody knowing. So I do, I do inform the parents because that's, you know, one of the positive things that we really wanna highlight with our students.
Can I add just to, in response to, that we're still doing assemblies and things, and that's how we have that Care to the Core Week, where we go and there's multiple things going on in the district. I mean, the district, we used to have that one at the Performing Arts, and we decided to put them at the building, so even though you're doing all these other things, we're still having assemblies throughout the district all over, and I think some of it is led by Ms. Charles, but maybe you're just not doing it, you know, you're doing other things more frequently in between the assemblies.
Absolutely. Yeah. Trustee Lane?
The other thing to add for the restorative practices and the circles, that's really to be proactive. So we wanna build community, we want students to learn how to be kind, and as Zainab said, the teachers, if they're doing that every day or every other day, the students are learning how to treat one another so that those incidents can decrease rather than increase, so we won't have to come in and be reactive with the circle, but we can be proactive instead.
Okay, Trustee Lane?
Well, I appreciate Mrs. Jabril's honesty, and I think we should look at, there's, there's so much social science research. Today's Nobel Prize winners in economics are, what do they call them, the, what do they call them, the povertyistas or rebelistas or something, but they're, the point is, they were, they found a new way to conduct social science reach, research, applying, research to human behavior. So I think we need to know what works, and maybe a lot of us remember, we remember assemblies. What works is what matters because we have limited dollars to invest.
Absolutely.
So whatever works, and I know our, our social work department, our psychologists in the district would be probably pretty well aware of a lot of that, so, and the principals as well. So I, I think we just need to think about it and challenge our thinking. So that being said, I would just like to briefly say, we've talked about what we're doing with students. We haven't talked about adults, and in my opinion, adults can be as bad about bullying as students.
Absolutely.
And frankly, adults talk about kids and animals, dogs, cats, whatever, and then we're showing bad examples of that behavior. We live in particularly difficult times when this is on display all the time, bad behavior, but we should learn from that. We should soul-search, we should reflect, and we should be setting good examples. I think we should have kids up here, and we should all be sitting there watching their example, really. They're better than we are. But one thing we can do as a district, we've, we've built in, and this is one of the last bastions, I believe, education is, with union contracts, we build in regulations and protections, legal protections for people to, to show examples of our American values, to show forgiveness, to show investigation, what actually happened, to show good decision-making. So I know that we have, we have many examples going on of different people who have said, said something or they acted somehow, that they need to have correction, and I'm talking about adults, not kids. And I want to say that I think our district has processes in place to do that, and that's, that's what human relations is all about. So we need to provide maybe more training, maybe our district needs more training. We have very little time for training for either kids or for adults. Everything is limited, so we need to find out what works, and then, then we also need to be realistic. Every one of us have said stupid things. We've said things that the minute they're out of our mouth, we wish we could grab them and bring them back in. So there needs to be a balance, and the toughest thing, in my opinion, my, my father always told me, the toughest thing in the world is to be fair, and I think every principal would, would say that, and maybe every district employee would say that. It's very tough to be fair when you know someone has done something wrong and there needs to be correction, but we need to soul-search and show personal examples as well, so I just wanna say that philosophically. We, I know there is, I just would like to finally end by saying, there is so much stress on our employees. They're coming and they're doing, most of them, 99% are doing a good job every day, and we have to appreciate that. And Dr. Maleko and all of the district, I think, has done that. The tone has been positive, so I'm very appreciative of that. 99%, kids get bullied every, you know, it just happens in human relations, unfortunately. We are not perfect beings, so.
Trustee Barry?
Thank you very much for what you're doing. Trustee Lane makes a very good point. Yeah, adults can be bullies too, and do we need training? Yes, of course, we need training on that for adults. You mentioned that it's costly. How do you put a cost on somebody that gets bullied to the point where their life just goes in the shambles? We need to look, it's real, it happens, and I think, I think training is in order, to be honest with you.
Is there anybody else? Okay, I just, I do have one question as well. I, it sounds like, and it's probably true across the district, that the concentration on the messaging is to the students. How do we engage the parents? Either the parents of the bullies, who we know some of this probably starts at home for one reason or another, and to the parents who want to be sure that the environment they're sending their students into is as safe as it can be. We all know, as Trustee Lane said, we're all human beings and human nature cannot constantly be monitored 24/7, but parents would like to be reassured that when they send their child into a building, that there's going to be some reasonable attempts to protect them, and bullying continues to be one of the top topics that we hear from the parents across the district. So how do we, how do we make sure, maybe they need an assembly if nothing else, so that they can be in the building and understand what the philosophy of the building is and what you're doing with those students during the day?
Honestly, I think restorative practices takes care of a lot of that because.
That's individual.
We do involve the parents in the decision-making as far as that goes, so we're kinda moving away from suspending every student that does something wrong, instead focusing on how are they going to repair the harm, and obviously, we need to get the parents on board before we can.
I'm saying in the general population of your parent population, who are coming into the building, not, not just the ones who need a problem addressed. I'm just saying, how are you communicating?
Being proactive.
Yeah, what you're doing proactively so that they, everybody kinda understands what's happening inside the building and what to expect.
So a lot of that is part of the PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Intervention Support, and we usually send out a handbook to parents of what that entails, so that's a lot of it. I don't know, Danine, if you have anything else that you'd like to add to that?
That's included, and also Leader in Me, so the schools that have that program going on, that goes out to the parents as well. But I think you're talking specifically about having parents be a part of the conversation and the training. That can definitely happen at the school level, especially with restorative practices.
You know, even with, through your PTAs or through, you know, there, there, there has to be a mechanism where parents who want to be supportive of what's going on in the buildings have an active role and, and, and are sure, and they might not be particularly impacted by a situation, but the fact is, is that all parents need to know of what to expect from a building. And quite frankly, parents get a lot of stuff sent their way, especially at the beginning of the school year. They don't, they don't always read it or, or take it into account and it sticks with them kinda thing. So there, there has to be other opportunities, just as we're doing with the students, of reminding them of how we expect them to behave. We have to have the same kind of attempts of conversation with the parents as well.
That's very doable, actually, during our PTSA meetings, you know, parent education, bringing the, you know, the parents on board and making them aware of a lot of the programs that we have going on.
Even maybe when you have conferences or any, I mean, have some, some opportunity.
Absolutely, that's doable.
I mean, there must be other ways to reach out and make sure that parents are hearing the message that we'd like them to hear. Yes, Trustee Barry?
President Petrokoff makes a very valid point here. My son or daughter, nobody's bothering them, but I hear things in the community, I see things on the social media, so what I'm hearing her say, me personally, is that, how do you make me feel welcomed? How do you make me feel that my son or daughter is safe at your building? That might be the next step to go, yeah, so.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And maybe it might even involve having a community forum and maybe an hour here and there, like we do with the strategic planning, and have that training for parents and open up the conversation. That's something that we could definitely do.
Yeah, we need to partner with everyone. I mean, this is not a problem that's specific to any one building or any, any age group. It's, it is.
It's a national epidemic.
It's, yeah, so everybody needs to be on board with this conversation. Everybody needs to feel empowered and have an opportunity to, to be heard. Yes, Trustee McSimpson.
When I was responsible in bullying behavior was first brought up, and we were way ahead of the game before it was enacted as a law, the district was way ahead. I served on the committee that did that, and it was a partnership with mosque and churches and schools and libraries and the entire city, and I remember the posters that were out. And I think perhaps it's just getting back to kind of that climate, that this is an issue that the entire city has to embrace, or not an issue, but this is a climate that the entire city has to embrace, and ways of, of just bringing it back to that, that this is something, it's a climate for the entire city and everyone involved, and we need to celebrate that, we need to be the ones that personify that, so I think that's.
I still have that poster.
I do too.
Be an upstander.
Absolutely.
By my office.
I do too. I had it hanging in the front window of my house for a long time.
It was a student that created that.
Absolutely.
In the back there.
If we still have some, I think maybe we should start.
I think you were a parent at Atso Ford when I was the assistant principal.
I was. I think, you know, getting back to just the reminders that that's who we are.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we move on now.
Yes.
Dr. Maleko, you congratulate Dr. Mosalem. We moved on pretty quickly. I also wanna congratulate Mr. Dr. Mosalem. I wanna congratulate the students of Crestwood School District because they're the ones that benefits from his service. I also wanna take this opportunity to thank him for his service. Among other positions, he served us very well at Forts and High School and did an amazing job with Atso Ford feeder track. Now, Dearborn's got something to be proud of. The last two superintendents who were hired in southeastern Michigan are Dearborn products. Obviously, Dr. Mosalem, and the other one is Dr. Jaleel Ahmed at Hampton High School District, so it's amazing work. Graduation rates are up, and we're sending superintendents out there.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you, are we done with yours? Okay, next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Commendations. They're coming. They forgot what they were here for. It's been so long.
They got carried away.
We apologize for your late night.
So congratulations to Lisa Meyer, who was chosen to receive the American Center for Elemental Music Spotlight Award. The award is presented by the American Center for Elemental Music and Movement to recognize outstanding music educators.
Congratulations to Peter Cochiannis, Assistant Principal at So Ford. For his work serving as, he acted as the principal for six weeks at the school. His strong leadership skills and ability to utilize the support of his team helped in meeting the day-to-day needs of the school as well as working through several challenging situations. His compassionate care and genuine love for the students and their well-being showed in all of his interactions.
And congratulations to Eunice Middle School student Athnan Hassan. She was selected as one of the two students from Michigan to participate. She was selected as one of the two students from Michigan to participate in the Fuel Up to Play 60 Summit. The four-day summit was held in Cleveland, Ohio over the summer. Fuel Up to Play 60 empowers students and educators to work together to build healthier schools and create healthy, high-achieving students. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Barry.
Please introduce yourself.
Their names did scroll at them.
Names in the school.
Sorry, I want to be on the-
My name is Zainab Badun and I'm from Dearborn High School.
Okay.
I'm Timothy L. Aziz, I'm from Dearborn High School.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Good job. Great job, great job.
Acknowledgements of donations.
Can I have, it's going to come up?
The following donations have been offered to the school district. Acceptance of these donations are requested at this time. A donation of $600 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for standing desks. A donation of $1,500 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for corner mirrors. A donation of $975 has been offered to Carter School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for literacy resource. A donation of $2,079 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for mentoring program. A donation of $2,390 and four cents has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a Promethean Board. A donation of $400 has been offered to Oakman Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for flexible seating. A donation of $160 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Lego wall. A donation of $2,500 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Inside Out Literacy Project. A donation of $399 and 23 cents has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for flexible seating. A donation of $200 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for poetry unit. A donation of $450 and five cents has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Growing Kindness Garden. A donation of $264 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for sensory input and personal space. A donation of $2,600 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Chromebooks. A donation of $650 has been offered to Carter School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for safety helmets for at-risk students. A donation of $588 and 28 cents has been offered to Maples Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for visuals for special learners. A donation of $500 has been offered to Howe School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for preschool ASD sensory needs. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Dr. Glenn Maleko to be used for the hydration project. A donation of various school supplies has been offered to Dearborn High School by Red Lobster to be used in the freshman academy to support students who struggle with organization. A donation of art supplies has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Hollis Shands to be used in art rooms throughout the district. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Blue Hands United to be used for calming corners for special education classrooms. That is all.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings, Policy Committee Meeting, September ninth, 2019, Board Report nineteen thirty-four, and Regular P-12 Meeting, September nine, 2019, Board Report nineteen thirty-five. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
Shall we move?
Support.
Are there any corrections? Yes, Trustee McDon.
I have a small one. On the regular meeting minutes from September, if you go to page twenty-one, on the first line, we need to change November to October. And then the same correction needs to be changed a little further down. Do you see it? On page twenty-one? When it's talking about policy. Did you find it?
Yeah.
Okay, and the same exact correction, if you go down to lower, if you're in B, Committee Reports, the second paragraph, the same correction.
Yeah, November.
From November to October.
So it should be at October.
That's all I found.
All right then, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, we attach unanimous roll. Next, please. We're, and I'm just going to say, we're going to flip the agenda right now. Police Chief Hadad wasn't able to make it tonight, so we're going to have his report in November. And since we're going to be running the Law Workshop Report, we decided that we would help out all of those who came here to speak to us, to let them go now, and then we'll go back to the special report. So we're going to start with citizen participation.
Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items for Action who are signed in by seven-ten by submitting a blue card to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times. Starting with agenda items, wanting to speak about the BRICS bond will be Jane Maza, representing the DFT, Tom Hand, representing DSOEA, Al Lorini, representing DFSC, and Dave Higgins, representing ADSA.
Hello, good evening, President Petrikov, Board. So my name's Jane Maza, I'm President of the Dearborn Federation of Teachers, and we represent over twelve-hundred teaching professionals working in the Dearborn Public Schools. We're very proud to serve the students and our community, and we support the BRICS bond proposal one-hundred percent. As teachers who are in the classroom every day, we appreciate the Board placing a high priority on keeping our buildings and specifically our classrooms well-maintained and addressing the infrastructure, capacity, and safety concerns at our schools. We are concerned that if this bond is not successful in November, general fund dollars will be needed to, will be need, will be needed to kind of bridge the gap, and therefore it could start to impact our classrooms with either staff reductions or program reductions. So we feel the BRICS bond is a proactive approach to ensure our district can continue to invest in both our physical structures and our students' futures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tom Hand, I'm the President of the Dearborn Schools Operating Engineers Association, and we, we encourage approval of this bond proposal on November fifth. Although all the components are important, and one that's nearest and dearest to our hearts is the infrastructure part, as building engineers, we're charged with protecting and maintaining the physical assets of the district, so we're excited about that part. And with over two-thirds of our buildings older than sixty years old, that becomes even a more important proposal, so we are encouraging a yes vote on November fifth. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
President Petrikov, trustees, Dr. Maleko. My name's David Higgins, I'm Principal William Ford Elementary and President of the ADSA and a resident in Dearborn. As President of the ADSA, I represent the administrators who work with our instructional and non-instructional staff at each building to create a school environment that is welcoming for all students. For us, the passage of the BRICS bond will mean an even safer school environment for all. With $12 million earmarked for creating secured vestibules in each building, adding additional card readers at entry doors, and installing cameras at all schools, principals and assistant principals will be provided with the additional tools they need to help keep our schools safer for students and staff members. The members of the ADSA support the BRICS bond because it is a comprehensive and proactive plan developed by our community that will benefit all schools in our district. For those of us who are in the school every day, we know that voting on November fifth in support of the BRICS bond will be a vote of support for our current students and our future students. And as always, we thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Al Lorini, and I represent the Dearborn Federation of School Employees, Non-Instructional Union. The non-instructional employees of our union are in support of and will work for the passage of the BRICS bond. Many of our members live and work in this community and see firsthand the need for the repairs and the renovations that this bond will address. The $240 million in funds generated by the sale of these bonds will go to replace aging infrastructure. With this money, items such as boilers which heat our buildings, roofs, parking lots, windows, classroom furniture, bathrooms, electrical and plumbing needs will be addressed throughout the district. We, the members of the DFSC, are proud of our community, we're proud of our neighborhoods, and we're proud of our schools. And so we ask our fellow residents, who too are proud of these things, to join us and pass this bond and use this financial investment to restore those things we cherish, because in the final analysis, we all understand the wisdom of an old Dutch proverb that says, "What costs nothing is worth nothing." And we are committed to keep our community, our neighborhoods, and our schools worth something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, wishing to speak about the BRICS bond from the Citizens for Dearborn Schools are Mr. Hussein Hashem and Ms. Maria Dwyer.
Good evening.
I am a resident, a proud Fortson graduate, and a parent in the district presently. I'm here with my co-chair for the Citizens for Dearborn Schools, Hussein Hashem, to voice our support for the BRICS bond. We've listened to everything that you've had to say tonight, and we agree with everything you've said with your well-thought-out comments and the endorsements that we just heard. I have to say that I've lived in Dearborn my whole life, and being part of this process hands-on and upfront has been enlightening. I've listened to your comments about bullying, and I, I will say that, yes, adults could use a lesson or two in some of that, but wholeheartedly, I support this bond and I'm proud to stand before you today, and I'll take it all, just to ensure that this bond does pass on November fifth. I've also been enlightened and impressed by the amount of time and effort Dr. Maleko, Dave, Tom have put into educating our residents about this bond. We've heard a lot on social media about the lack of transparency, and I can tell you that is far from the truth, and those arguments are meritless. The amount of hours that have been put into the schools in attending each of these schools and having all of these meetings weekly and offering up, you know, time on the weekends to appear before various associations is really quite impressive, and I'm very proud to stand before you and to share with you all the work that's been done. I'm also a Board Member with the Dearborn Education Foundation and the Chair of the Dearborn Area Chamber of Commerce this year, so I know that both of those organizations participated in the Infrastructure Task Force programs and the work that was done more than two years ago. So the argument, as you noted, President Petrikov, that, you know, this is just something that's come up just recently, and, and, you know, folks are claiming surprise by this bond coming forward, that also lacks merit. I know, in being part of those organizations, that this is something that's been in the public eye for over two years. And so, you know, being an education attorney for almost twenty years, some of these things, and I understand, they come a little easier, because I understand the bidding process. I understand, once dollars are earmarked for certain things, that we can't change our minds and say that we're going to take these monies and place them elsewhere. I understand all of that. But for those residents who aren't, you know, boots on the ground in education law or part of committees such as yours and boards such as yours, I encourage folks to come forward and attend these meetings. There are many more to come. We're happy to take calls and questions as a task force, as a committee to support, and I know that Dr. Maleko is happy to take those calls. So for residents who are questioning how the monies will be spent and why these dollars are needed now, I encourage them to come to these meetings and educate yourselves. We are a democracy, and, and I encourage everyone to get out and vote, but before doing so, make sure that you are well-informed. Social media is a blessing and a curse, and so don't rely on some things that are being said on some of these websites. Come out and educate yourselves. And so I'm confident in this process, I'm confident in your leadership, I appreciate everything you do, I understand that your work, as our work, is that of volunteers. And so we appreciate you, thank you for supporting this bond, thank you for bringing it forward, and thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
It's hard to speak after a lawyer. It's harder to speak after Maria, so I'll try my best. Good evening, Madam President, good evening, Board Members. My name is Hussein, I'm Maria's colleague, and I'm the co-chair of the Citizens for Dearborn Schools. As has been mentioned before, the two-hundred-and-forty million that will be, that the district will be able to get from selling bonds will basically used to upgrade, enhance, and improve all of the thirty-four buildings in Dearborn that needs the improvements and the support and the upgrade. However, it's something that hasn't been mentioned too, too often, I think we need to highlight, is that the district will be able to acquire two buildings from Henry Ford College that will be used to expand the programs such as the Collegiate Academy Program, the Early College, the Adult Educations, and as you guys know, we are a future-driven, like this is the slogan for Henry Ford College, we are a future-driven community, and we need to prepare for the next years to come, for the next century. And if we are not market-driven and future-driven, even if we graduate with ninety-six percent and ninety-seven percent, even with a hundred percent, and we're not related to the market, there is no point of it. So I think this is something to commend, that we are buying to building to expand those programs that will benefit our students. The other thing that I want to mention, that Maria mentioned briefly too, that this has been in the public for over two years, and I was part of the Infrastructure Committee, and the Infrastructure Committee was very diverse, it included everyone, no one was excluded, it had over sixty-five community members from all walks of life, from all backgrounds and expertise. We came into the same room and we discussed the issues, and we toured the buildings, and we looked firsthand at what's going on with those building, and we made recommendations to the Board that basically adopted those recommendations and went with a zero-mill that will not increase the taxes in our community. The last thing I want to mention, that those buildings and all of the schools in Dearborn Public Schools are not the property of a superintendent, are not the property of a Board Member, are not the property of the Principal or me or Maria. Those buildings belong to our community, and if we are investing a penny in them, it means we are investing in our community for centuries and generations to come, and this money will not go to waste. So I really encourage everyone to attend those public meetings, they're public. If you're watching on TV, if you're watching on Facebook, those meetings are public. Those people who are standing here are our elected officials. They've been elected by thousands of our residents, and they are very accessible. Their emails are, their contact info and their emails are available on DearbornSchools.org. You can reach out to them, they're in the community, you can ask them the question. I really want to encourage everyone, we have oppositions who are spending thousands and lots of money to basically kill the bond and harm our schools and harm our students. We have to be proactive, we cannot sit at home and have somebody else decide for us. We have to make our voice heard, and we have to advocate for the bond, and we have to make sure it passes so our buildings stays open, we have, so we can still have this great free public education system that we have in Dearborn, because you cannot put a price tag on a good quality education. That's why we need to be proactive, we need to go out, we need to vote absentee, and we need to vote in person on November fifth. Thank you. Vote yes.
Thank you.
Now, on non-agenda items. Wishing to speak about Dearborn Unified, I'm sorry, Dearborn Unified Gymnastics Program, Kyla Heaton.
Hi. My name is Kyla Heaton, and I'm a junior at Essel Ford High School. I've been participating in Dearborn Unified Gymnastics for two years, and I really enjoyed and care about the sport and the team. I was really looking forward to continuing this year, so I was really bummed when the Athletic Director at Essel called me into his office at the end of last year to tell me that due to small participation in the program, the gymnastics was canceled. At first, I didn't know what to think, and it was totally unexpected and unreal. However, as this news set in, I became devastated and realized how much I love being a team, on the team, and just doing this sport. The main reason-
The main reason that I love gymnastics is that it's all about personal growth and working on getting better on my own personal skills. There is, there are not many sports in high school like that. Also, it invites girls from not only Etzel Ford and DHS, but Fortson too, bringing girls from all over Dearborn together. You could even come in to our practice and never have even attempted a somersault and loved being a part of the team. I don't think that the girls from last year realized how much they grew and improved. This sport means so much to me and so many others, and I'm even missing rehearsal at Dearborn Youth Symphony, in which I participate in Symphony Orchestra and Advanced Flute Choir to speak here tonight. So I decided that I wasn't going to give up, and I wanted to try to get our program back. The first step I took was emailing the Athletic Director. So on April 24th, I emailed him asking if there was anything I could possibly do to keep the sport running. He replied on May 8th saying no, and it was because there was too small numbers. However, I knew that there was no way we were giving in that easily. As a team, we attended one of these board meetings last spring, and both of our coaches and a parent of a gymnast spoke. They mentioned that if cost was really a problem, we could fix that. Another problem was decreasing participation, was the decreasing participation over the few years. That's when I realized that we had no publicity in any of the high schools. Most people don't even know that the team exists. In the past few days, I posted on all of my social media and asked if anyone was interested in joining. After that, I created an Instagram account for our gymnastics and posted about the program. My team members also joined in and asked around, and my mom created a Facebook group for the team. Through doing just these few things, we had many students who are interested in joining and wanting to learn more. I know that any conflict or problem that our team comes across will find a way to fix, and our team would really like to work with the district to make this work for all of us. I really hope that you will consider reinstating Dearborn Unified Gymnastics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good evening. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning.